Stand for the pledge, please. Our pledge is to live in peace with the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's reflection is based on Jeremiah, chapter thirty-two, verse twenty-seven. "I am the Lord, the God of every person on earth; nothing is impossible for me." We need to hear that God is still in control. We need to hear that it's not over until He says so. We need to hear that life's mishaps and tragedies are not a reason to veil out. They are simply a reason to sit tight. When the train goes through a tunnel and the world goes dark, do you jump out? Of course not. You sit still and trust that the engineer will get you through. The way to deal with discouragement, the cure for disappointment, go back and read the story of God. Read it again and again. Be reminded that you aren't the first person to weep and you aren't the first person to need help. Heavenly Father, please help us today as we do the business of the county, keep our citizens safe. Thanks for treating us so well through this pandemic, both health-wise and economically. We pray for rain and an end to the ceaseless wind, and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I do not have any particular comments this morning other than Bill's head about rain and the ceaseless wind. We have one minor adjustment that I put onto the agenda after appointment to the conventionary visitors bureau board and an appointment to the fair board as well. Other than that, any further additions or corrections to the agenda? We have a motion to accept.
Second.
There's been a motion. Any discussion? No discussion heard. All those in favor say aye. Consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to move the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. I'm second.
Here are no discussions. All those in favor that have proven the consent agenda, say aye. Public comment. It's nice to see people in the room again. Anybody, any public comment that is not already on the agenda for today? See, no public comment. Anything online or that we need to talk about today?
We did not receive anyone.
Thank you. Let's just move right into the business stuff then. First thing on the items is the budget request from our outside agencies. City on a Hill, we have Chris in the audience. If you... Oh, we're trying to palm it off. I see that. Would you come up here to the microphone, please? And just for the record, would you state your name for the purpose of it?
My name's Christopher Lund. I'm the CEO of City on a Hill.
Miranda Enno. I'm the program director here in Garden City.
So we find ourselves here again, like we do every year for the budget requests. If I could, I wanted to just start with a brief history of our organization. In two thousand and eight, there were zero residential treatment beds in western Kansas. If you take the state of Kansas and you draw a line down the middle of it, Wichita, Salina, east, all the residential beds for adult females were in eastern Kansas prior to two thousand and eight. Since that time, City on a Hill has added forty-five beds to the infrastructure of residential beds in rural areas of Kansas. We're very proud of that. Back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, gentleman by the name of Ronaldo Mesa, who I'm sure you guys are familiar with, had come to us. There were some concerns at the time that the services were no longer going to be available. For those of you that don't know, we're located in the old city building, the original city hall parole and all that. That was the original city admin building. That's where we're located. New Chance ran that for twelve years up until two thousand and seven. We purchased it in two thousand and eight from them and have been providing services there for alcohol and drug evaluations and outpatient services for almost twenty-five years. The longest spot for that particular service in Garden City, so we're also very proud of that. We, at the time, began asking for the city and county to receive what was considered at the time ADSAT funds or AFAC funds, Alcohol Fund Advisory Committee, which was done through the ADSAT DUI program that they had at the time. It was actually part of the Kansas statutes that a certain percentage of the alcohol tax be applied to substance abuse programs in the local area where the tax was derived from. Ronaldo was really good about it. We received twenty thousand first year, seventeen thousand the second year, and it gradually began to dwindle down around two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. I got busy with school and we began to add on some services, hiring people. We weren't paying as much attention to what the city was doing with the AFAC funds. We basically got defunded, I guess, probably due to a lack of paying attention, I guess. That's probably my fault. At any rate, when we did come back to the AFAC people for the city, it became apparent that it was no longer being used for alcohol or substance abuse treatment. It was basically just being used for every agency in Garden City to apply for those funds. If you did apply, you're basically looking at two to three thousand dollars, which wasn't sufficient to serve the purpose of what we're looking for. In terms of a duplication of services, there were a few times we've been here and there were some questions as whether or not there was a duplication of services. Were we doing the same thing that other people or organizations were doing? And as terms of residential treatment, we are the only residential treatment provider for Finney County in this area. The only one. There are no other ones. So there is no duplication of services if that was an issue. We also have looked at... Where's your sheet with the percentages of Finney County? So, at the time, we began a grassroots coalition involving multiple counties in western Kansas. We had Greeley, Hamilton, Kearney, Lane, Morton, Scott, Seward, Stanton, Stevens, Wichita. So every time, this time of year, I would travel around and meet the different people. It ended up developing into a grassroots coalition. I met the Moser brothers in Greeley County. Robert was a doctor, went on to KDHE. He introduced us to Dr. Randall Farnholz, who at the time was doing the only Suboxone treatment at the time. We were doing opioid treatment with Suboxone ten years before they ever mentioned the word epidemic. And that came out of the coalition. We've met several people along the way that have been extremely supportive in what we've done. We've been able to add and grow. We added the Reintegration Center in Liberal, Kansas. In two thousand and fourteen, we invested a quarter million dollars to allow us to continue providing treatment services at a lower level. The gals from Marionthal and Sedan can come down to the Reintegration Center, stay an additional ninety days. So we're actually in residential treatment for up to a hundred and twenty days, and then we can look at outpatient services following that. So all the data indicates that a continuation of treatment, in other words, the longer you can keep somebody involved in the treatment process, the more successful you are. And we've been able to do that through our Reintegration Center in Liberal. In terms of Finney County, when we look at just the basic facts that we have, City on a Hill has completed just over three hundred substance abuse DUI evaluations at our Garden City office for two thousand and nineteen, with at least two hundred and six of those being Finney County residents. City on a Hill provided DUI and drug and alcohol education to two hundred and seventy-five adults in southwest Kansas, with one hundred and fifty of those being Finney County residents. City on a Hill has provided inpatient substance abuse treatment to two hundred and eight women, with sixty-two of those being from Finney County. City on a Hill has provided reintegration services to approximately sixty-five women from Finney County. City on a Hill has provided inpatient and/or outpatient services with Kansas block grant funding to nearly two hundred men and women who are at or below the two hundred percent federal poverty level. City on a Hill has started a co-occurring disorders housing project, which assists women with identified mental health and substance abuse issues to obtain employment, Medicaid treatment services, medication, housing, educational, and other necessary services in the community. We have offered these services to Finney County from the very beginning. Seward County came on board in two thousand and fourteen. In comparison, Seward County has contributed almost a half million dollars. Since two thousand and fourteen, Finney County has contributed zero, nothing. Finney County has benefited more than any other county as a direct result of our services. So I come in every year and I try to explain to you guys. Some of you guys have even been out to our Marionthal facility. But I feel like we've been left behind and left out of the whole process, and we'd like to know what we can do to get back involved with that. We've done everything we possibly can to support Finney County, and now we're asking for your support.
Gentlemen, questions?
Chris, you mentioned the AFAC funding. I thought if by statute it had the third, a third, a third, it had to go to organizations like you at some level. Is that larger truth?
I believe that Kansas statutes does state that. I know that when we were inquiring with AFAC, there was, I think, we could apply for three thousand dollars or something, and that had to be used for a specific purpose.
Yeah, it was a grant process that we had to go through, and we had to develop a project to utilize the funding specifically. So it wasn't just available to us.
Go there. Chris, I know that you've got on your treatment services. What do you charge for your services?
It's on the income, under the income statement. I've got another indication before that. It's on the last one online.
Oh, treatment services. Yeah, so we are a block grant provider for state Kansas. It's the federal block grant administered by the state that accounts for roughly five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of our revenue services. People that are beneath the two hundred percent poverty margin can simply come in, be evaluated, and depending on the level of care they need, they have access to treatment without ever having to spend a dime out of their pocket. We're also licensed through Medicaid. That accounts for, I think last year was three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We're a Senate Bill one, two, three provider, which is the nonviolent felony program administered through KDOC. I think Stephanie's here from Corrections. We worked with Stephanie and Beth Beavers before she moved up the hill. We worked with her extensively. We have a working relationship with them, and we're continuing to do that. We do have a slight amount of private pay. Clients who come in and might be working at Sunflower Electric or something, and they are in need of services, and they can afford to pay. And those clients are billed cash, or they have, we're Blue Cross Blue Shield providers as well. So does that answer your question?
Yeah. Also, one more thing. The list of cities and counties, you request the same amount from Mary County?
No.
Based off population?
What we try to do is look at the size of the counties that we're in. The average range is two to four thousand dollars for the smaller counties, Greeley or Wichita or any of those counties. I think the highest for any of them is like four thousand. The city of Liberal contributes seventeen thousand this last year. The county contributed fifty-five thousand. So we're looking at basically fifty-five, seventeen... Seventy-two thousand from the county last year of Seward County. The year before that, they'd been at thirty-five thousand for the city, and the county had been at sixty thousand. So they were contributing almost ninety thousand dollars each year. And like I said, they probably are doing forty percent of what Finney County does in terms of our services, and they've contributed over a half million dollars in the last five years, and Finney County hasn't done anything.
Mons. Mr. Chairman, for those on the line, this is Lon. Chris, my questions are centered around how do people obtain your services? Are they referred to you by the courts? Are they referred to you by agencies? Are they ones who say they know City on a Hill offers these services, and they call and say, "I'd like assistance"? How do the people get to you or come to you?
Well, actually, Miranda and I just finished completing a commercial, a TV commercial, that will be airing in western Kansas. So please, anybody seen it? Nobody? But that's one of the latest. And then we have a website that lists all of our locations and the phone numbers, and it actually goes directly to my cell phone any inquiries, and we automatically contact them right away. We have a longstanding relationship with all the courts and corrections agencies in Kansas. We probably, Topeka, Kansas City, we have clients coming from all over the state. We've also had clients come in from out of the state, from Montana, far away as Arizona, to access our services through our online presence.
Thank you. And then my other question is related to what you said at the beginning with regard to forty-five beds. I heard you say rural Kansas. I'm assuming you're saying those are west of this line that you drew through Wichita and Salina, and Marionthal would be one of those places with some beds. But are there beds in Finney County? Are there beds in Seward County?
There's twenty-four beds in Seward County. That's our reintegration center. There's actually... There's actually an Oxford house that we just put in Seward County as well. And then we have a sober living house that's available for clients who are kind of in transition. They've got jobs, they have income, but they're not yet secure enough to move out on their own. So they have an additional four beds there. We have eight beds in Marionthal. And then we also have a facility in Sedan, Kansas, which is out east of that line, actually. And it's also a rural area, and that's one of the things that we specialized in. And why we put it in there was because it was another place that actually had no services at all, and we were asked to by the state, so we did. And other than the drive out there, it's been a successful program.
And I would just simply end with a comment, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned Oxford House. Years ago, Finney County had an Oxford House, and I don't know why it closed or anything.
I do.
So when you mention that, it brings back thoughts of when I was helping Lon with that.
We, Friends of Recovery now in Salina is in charge of the Oxford in Kansas. There's over a hundred houses. It's a completely different run organization. I attended a chapter meeting yesterday in Dodge City, and I was impressed by the oversight and the accountability that they have now for Oxford. We put that first house in in Liberal, and we're going to pay close attention to how it's running and how well it goes. And then, you know, like I said, hopefully, we'd like to expand the Oxford programs up here as well, but we want to make sure we're doing this right and correctly first.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This date, for those online, Chris, excuse me. The program you had that I visited at the Forum at Marionthal had women, you said eight? I thought there were more than that at the time.
Seemed like that sometimes.
That particular day, the last day I visited, I think they were all at Scott Park fishing or something. You had made arrangements. But tell us, when somebody checks into that environment, how many weeks, days, whatever, of treatment is the regimen before you look at sending them out with a pat on the back and good luck?
So when we started in two thousand and eight, the typical program was twenty-eight days. And what we found was we were sending them back to eastern Kansas, typically to reintegration programs that were only in eastern Kansas, Wichita, Topeka, Salina. And they would lose the foundation that they had started with us, and then we would see them again, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. That's why the reintegration program in Liberal was so important. So we went from a seventeen percent success ratio to almost seventy percent with the clients a year after putting in our reintegration programs. So I mean, seven out of every ten women who came to our program, a year later, were still doing well. And the state's average is nine percent. So we're almost seventy. The state's average is at nine percent. So you actually have one of the best programs in Kansas right here at your disposal. You just need to help fund it.
Okay, now I have, I have one following question, and I think I have my questions pretty well answered, Mr. Chairman. The alcohol funding that you were talking about, that you used to get but no longer do, are those the funds that we now see being dispersed of the youth baseball leagues and so on?
No.
So if...
Those funds are specifically labeled for Parks and Recreation.
Well, that's, that was my thinking. Okay, so I'm getting two programs perhaps, except for a little. But the program monies that you're talking about, when that comes before us for an agreement for dispersal, where have we agreed for it to be dispersed, you know? I'm somewhat at a loss, and he says...
The only ones we ever see are the ones for the Parks and Recreation. I agree, because that's...
That's the, that's the program that we manage. The alcohol and drug abuse is what's managed by the city. They actually, they fund ninety percent of that, and we fund ten percent of that. But they, they go through that, and I believe there are some county officers on that committee.
Okay, well, I'm trying to figure out how do we direct some, some attention to that committee, if you will, to follow the state law, if it says what Chris is reporting that the state law says.
I believe the Assistant City Manager, Jennifer Pennington, manages that program, so she would be a great one to reach out to.
Okay. I think there were just several organizations and entities that were in need of funds, and over time, they just began accessing those funds. And Dr. Clifford mentioned, I think it's a third, a third, and a third, which is under Kansas statutes, and I don't think that's no longer the case, but I can't say for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, well, of course.
Okay.
Well, mine was, as a general, and I forgot to ask, you mentioned at the beginning opioids, and we don't hear maybe as much about that as we did a year or two ago, even though it's still prevalent. But what percentage of your clients would be from an opioid addiction versus just other issues that they might have that they come to you?
So I am sometimes at odds with my colleagues, because we're in rural Kansas. When we go to meetings in Topeka and stuff, they're right in the, in the center of a lot of that. In rural Kansas, it's a little bit different. You have pockets of this, and you have people that are abusing opioids. It is a problem. It definitely is an issue. I mentioned Dr. Farnholz earlier. He used to do Suboxone treatment ten years ago. We used to do it in residence, and it was pretty effective. And since then, we haven't been able to find a doctor in this area who's licensed to do that. You have to have a special certificate training to be able to administer Suboxone to patients, and no one in western Kansas has it. I think...
There was someone at Genesis doing it.
Genesis, yeah, has a part-time doctor. Comes in one day a week and services eight counties or something. So there's really not access to those services. But we treat opioid addiction like we do the other addiction. We treat it the same as cognitive behavioral therapies and the other therapies that are available to us, and we don't really view it as a different than any other addiction.
All right, gentlemen, we need to move on. Chris kept his presentation to seven minutes, but you guys add a tin to it, so. Move on. Can I have a motion, please? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, as you might have gathered, the three agencies, I have a ten-minute limit on you, not counting what we do to you, okay? So, Finney County Historical, Hysterical Museum. Steve, will come up and give us your two cents worth.
If you can get Steve to wrap this up in ten minutes, that'll be a first. I think I managed that last year, and just to make that possible, I won't hit all my points, but I do have handouts, so you can take this with you. And there should be enough for Mr. Reeves, who I haven't met yet, so great. And also, I think, for Dory.
Nice, much, very dorky on your flag exhibition.
Thank you. We've been planning that for about a year, and it's the Flag Day and Independence Day coming up. We wanted to do that.
Take it any time. Go.
Okay, thank you. Well, before I start, I do want to just point out some pictures on the cover of our presentation. You'll see some of our events and activities, the Antique Appraisal Fair, some of twenty-nine thousand guests who visited the museum after they viewed exhibits, family seeing some of our exhibits. And that lower right-hand picture I just had to throw in, because I love it, that's Karen Baird, one of our volunteers, and she's dusting Buffalo Jones, well, his statue, anyway. I normally bring some of our board members along for moral support, but since it was important not to have too many folks in the room, I put a list on the inside cover there for you. We do have a twenty-two-member board of elected directors who represent the people of Finney County. And we are the Finney County Historical Museum. Our parent organization is the Finney County Historical Society, and we have a really simple mission, but it's pretty big, preservation of the past to enlighten the future. And that's specific to Finney County and the Garden City community and area. And we really have tried to do that over the past year and prior to that through four key objectives, and those are obviously museum exhibits, research and information, education, which sometimes surprises people, but that's a big piece of what we do, and artifact preservation. And in that process, we think we provide a lot of relevant benefits for Finney County and Garden City. Since I talked about those pictures, I want to point out a few on that first inside page, too. You see the big pool there about sixty-five years ago? You see the Stevens Opera House, and at the top right corner, that's President Eisenhower visiting Garden City, Kansas in the nineteen fifties. At the bottom, you'll see our nineteen oh seven depot in the steam locomotive days, and you'll see some musical performers from the Garden City Community Mexican Fiesta in the nineteen thirties. It's been going on a long time. If you would go with me to the two inside pages, I want to focus briefly on... If you would go with me to the two inside pages, I want to focus briefly on each of our four key objectives, exhibits, and you see that at the top left, and you see Mr. Brett Marshall there displaying a book that he published after doing research in our library. You'll see one of our exhibits, the Finy County Soldiers in World War I. And you'll see at the top right, a picture of Yudera Hernandez, our artifact registrar, checking in eight firearms used during the 1920s by the infamous legal gang, which was based in Finy County, and that's now part of our exhibits. I won't go into all of that, but I hope you'll look at that later as you have time. We are at any given time offering about 20 different exhibits and displays. We're open free to the public seven days a week. In addition to changing exhibits periodically, we've changed a few other things recently in the museum. We've added Plexiglas shielding in appropriate places. We're doing social distancing, but we don't have tape on the floors. We're using antique yardsticks placed end to end to show people how far they should be staying from each other. We've placed hand sanitizer at the doors. We're cleaning high-touch surfaces every day. Masks are welcome, and we hope to even be providing some of those soon. I won't, as I said, go into all the exhibits, but I do want to quickly hit on the ones that have changed repeatedly in our front door gallery. Going back about a year and a half, we did the 100th anniversary of World War I, the 100th anniversary of Garden City Community College, historic Finy County signage, our Christmas exhibit, which was a 1950s Santa's workshop diorama. Recently, a whole collection of historic mid-century American bakeware, and we've just opened historic American flags and local history, and that will be up through, through midsummer. And we did set a record. Two years ago, we topped for the first time 23,000 visitors in the museum. The next year, we hit 28,000, and in 2019, we hit 29,000, almost 30,000 visitors. Obviously, that's going to be reduced this year. We recently reopened after closing on the 30th of March. That's exhibits in a nutshell. Our research library, we're answering about 1,700 questions yearly. We've recently added 230 more books to the various volumes that we have, including about 6,000 that we absorbed from the public library a couple of years ago. We had a problem with that because our shelving was about seven and a half feet tall, and it was a little tippy. One of the accomplishments we did this year was to stabilize that shelving with some bracing, so public access is allowable and much safer in there. We are providing information every day for families, individuals, authors, movie and TV producers, home buyers, real estate agencies, property owners, teachers, lots of genealogy researchers, churches, civic groups, government agencies, everybody. And I say this every year, but I do want to point out, we are the sole repository for old early-day records on Finy County and on Sequoia County, which was who we were before we were Finy County, and on Garfield County, which is our northeast panhandle, which at one time was a county of its own and is now part of us. And that includes county records, tax records, census and other demographic records, school records, court records, and even Finy County homestead claims. I want to talk about education and preservation, that's on the right-hand page, and you see some pictures there of kids at Garden City Arts helping to create our Christmas exhibit this past year. You'll see our education coordinator, Jonetta Heberly, talking to a group of students from Kansas State University. And on the right hand, you'll see a gentleman named Mark Ferguson portraying true Old West character Doc Holliday in one of our recent, recent programs. Our education program over the past year touched 11,637 lives. Those were children and adults, and that's a record. We did that through in-house tours, through classroom presentations, through presentations nursing homes at the Senior Center of Finy County, our evening at the museum, and brown bag lunch, free lecture programs, and also presentations for Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, other youth groups, family reunions, civic organizations, and, and that goes on and on. Obviously, this year, we have been impacted by COVID-19. More and more of our presentations right now are by Zoom and by Facebook, and like the school district, we had to scramble a bit on those, but that's up and running. It's summer now, so that's a little bit of a break, and we'll be doing a combination in the fall, we hope, of electronic and live presentations. But again, it was a new record this year in the number of, of lives that we touched. And then that brings us to preservation, and that is preservation of artifacts and records and other objects relevant to Finy County and Southwest Kansas history. In 2019, we topped 21,000 artifacts, and we keep finding places to put them, and it's getting tighter, but we've managed to do that. When you come into the museum, you'll see our exhibits, and you're seeing 15 to 20% of our collection. We try to move things forward and get those where folks can see them. I got the two-minute warning there, thank you. One other thing we did in preservation this year, we wanted to preserve the legacy of our former director, Mary Regan, who spent 25 years of her life at the museum. And we did that by renaming our meeting room. It is now the Mary Regan Conference Room, and we're really proud of that. And if you go with me to the last page, I just want to hit a few basic details. We have been serving the people of Finy County for 72 years. We were founded right down the street at the Finy County Courthouse in 1948. The museum itself opened with regular exhibits in 1964, and we've been serving the community ever since. We do spend a lot of time raising funds, and I just wanted to point that out. There's a list there, and I hope you look at those, of events we do year-round that do two things. They celebrate history, and they raise funds so that we can carry on the work we do in meeting our mission. With that, I think I would conclude, other than just to say we're glad to be here, we are proud to preserve the heritage of Finy County and to serve the people of Finy County as well.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, questions?
Steve, I was looking at your list of events that you had scheduled for the spring. How big of an effect will a loss of revenue on your special events be? How many, how many events would you lose out that you can't reschedule?
We've lost three events that we can't reschedule, and we have one more that we're drastically reducing. We had to cancel the Finy County Pioneer Awards banquet, our Evening in the Past History reenactment, and our Historic Homes Tour. We are going ahead on the 11th of July with our Flea Market Festival, but that's normally a major event with 50 out-of-town vendors, booths all over the park behind us, and in a short period of time, about 4,500 people. We don't think we can do that this year. We are scaling that down to one portion of what we've had in the previous years, and that is a sale of donated goods and items on our patio. And we're going to expand that out into the zoo a little bit so we can space tables out. But we have told our 50 or so vendors, stay home this year, don't come, we hope to have you back again next year.
Well, you, you have approximately $31,000 listed as revenue for special events. How big, would you lose half of that, a fourth of that?
We will probably lose $6,000 to $8,000, and this is an estimate, on the flea market and about $1,000 each on those others. We have been able to access some grant funding to help out, to mitigate some of that. And honestly, some of the things down the road, we think we can have, and some we may not, and it's just going to depend on crowd size, advisability at that time. Interestingly, the rib sale, we don't think there's a problem with that. The food is prepared professionally, and we don't have that many people in the room at, at one time. Our annual picnic, whether we can get 100, 150 people in a small room in October, we don't know yet.
Maybe we need more rib sales.
Well, maybe we do, and I'll, I don't have order forms yet, but we'll, we'll be doing that soon. Like everybody this year, we have a lot of uncertainties. We just don't know. It, it's really hard to predict. Like I said, we, we've done some, some grant funding as well that has helped. We'll see how it comes out. I'll know more at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Jim? Mr. Chairman, mine, mine is from a budgetary standpoint, and you've already addressed a portion of Larry's questions, and this is one for those online. But your request this year for 2021 is 216,000.
Yes.
If I read that correctly. And, and if, if we, with our budget restraints that we might have, and the loss of revenue that you have from your events, and I don't, I'm not suggesting a number or anything, but say it's something less than what your total budget is, including some of our funding, have you thought ahead of what services that would, that would impact? Would it impact people? Would it impact, what would it impact if you are having to do with less, both with the events and with county funding?
Our biggest fear is that it would impact people, so we would do everything we could to try to avoid that by reducing other services as well. We would also, in fact, we're already planning to do this. We normally, one of our fundraising events is just an appeal to our membership and others to help us out. We're going to do two of them this year instead of one. Do I know specifically at this point? No, because we're not far enough into the year.
I just wondered what the thoughts have been so far.
Yeah.
That's fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Steve, thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to take Steve's budget request under advisement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All those in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Thank you very much. And I hope you'll come and see the, the flag exhibit. It'll be up for a couple of months yet, so thank you.
Next on the list is Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. Here you go, Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. I don't know if you guys have the handouts, but they are even to you or not, but.
We have it all.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, my name is Jonathan Harold. I am the Development Director for the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center, and for the most part, I don't, I see a few new faces, I guess, but in a nutshell, just so I don't have to take too much of your time, we help heal the trauma of child abuse through support, prevention, and services. We specialize in forensic interviewing, therapy, of course, advocacy. Last year, we were excited to inform you of our, a, a new program we started with a couple of young men who have been partnering with the school systems to try to start what is called a WA trial program. We got that established, and, and our goal is to have them into every one of our communities over the next few years, which we are in 40 or 34 counties, so we serve all of Western Kansas. We are the only child advocacy center in the state of Kansas that has utilized mobile units. So how we can serve with a staff of about 20-some people, how we can serve all of Western Kansas is through our mobile units as well. We've got six brick-and-mortar centers, and in all of the other communities, we have mobile units that goes out and takes our services to the children. Last year, we had a record high of cases. We had 613 cases, 200, and I believe it was five for Finy County, 208, 208 of those 613 cases were from Finy County alone. Our office here on Seventh Street is probably the busiest one that we have, and we are extremely busy. Our therapists, we provided close to about 2,500 therapy sessions last year alone, in which we don't charge our families anything. And so all of our services that we provide is free to the families. We don't have an ongoing income that comes in because we don't charge for our services for the family. So we rely heavily on grants and also supports, and you guys have been, you guys supported us good last year, and now I'm just here this year to ask that you all continue to support into 2021. Any questions?
You always have questions.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, this one, thank you for being here, and thank you for what your organization does. My question is, is a fairly broad one, I guess, from a standpoint of, and it was referenced earlier with City on the Hill, potential replication of services, and I'm always concerned about that kind of thing with outside agencies. But my specific question is, is there a connection, and I know it's different, but is there a connection between your organization and CASA, who's, who's advocating for children in court? I mean, is there any kind of interconnection there?
You, you know, we, we do work with local, local agencies as partners, but as far as actually partners, as far as they're tied into us, they are not. I'm not familiar with what they do apart from they are court-appointed, from my understanding. We are not court-appointed. So the way we get involved, the way we get cases basically is we receive a phone call from DCF, we're law enforcement, and, and I'm almost like a first responder. As soon as we get the phone call, it can be day one, it could be minute five. As soon as we get that phone call, we are, we'll hit the road, or they'll, they bring the child into a local center, and we will provide services for the, the child and their non-offending guardians until they no longer need us. So again, where we are not court-appointed, we don't have a cutoff limit to the services we provide, so we can see a child provide therapy to them for six months, three years, as long as the child no longer need us. And I, and I always like to share this, you know, also, let's say if the child is no longer a child, but they're a young adult, and, and they, they had to utilize our services, you know, when they were 10, they're 21 now, let's say they get pregnant, they have a trigger of what happened to them when they were 10, they can come right back in, our doors are open. Again, free to them, we don't charge them. They can come back in for therapy sessions until they no longer need us again. So we, we're, we're there until, we're there when they need us, until they no longer need us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question with, with regard to the juvenile detention efforts that the county funds and your efforts, does that integrate in any way? Do you work any with, with the people that are being housed and cared for down at the Juvenile Detention Center? Is that, that's a completely different realm?
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't know. The services we provide is actually will be the abuse cases, and so if there's any been any kind of juvenile or any kind of that, that has experienced abuse, then they could use, they could have had used our, utilized our services. But for the most part, I'm not, I don't know. We, I, we don't really partner together for a specific program or nothing like that. I do know that, but yeah.
Thank you. My question, federal funds look like they, you're projecting on about ding this year. Is that usually pretty steady, or does that?
So somewhat, I mean, we, we rely heavily on grants, 70% of our budget gets met by grants, and so we, we receive a major one from federal, and then we receive some state through the CAC, because we are part of a nonprofit organization, the Child Advocacy Center, which is national. And so they, they can vary up and down, but we, we've already been, we've already been told that we're going to take a major hit. Yeah, yeah, so unfortunately.
Gentlemen, any further questions?
No, but Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take this budget request under advisement.
Clifford, say yes. All those in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys so much for meeting with me.
Thank you.
Finy County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Roxanne, your turn.
Good morning. I, too, may have to be timed. I have the ads as well.
Just know on the tongue that he does not discriminate.
Thank you. Are you ready?
I'm ready. For those of you who don't know me, I am Roxanne Morgan, the Kene Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director. And as we go through the presentation, the first page is basically just how to contact us, where to reach us on social media. Anybody interested in the public can go and visit that on our website at finiccountycbb.com or visit gct, visit gck.com. So our mission obviously is to attract overnight visitors to Finy County for lodging through tourism, marketing, convention, sales, business, and public relations while featuring local amenities, and thus enhancing the economic benefit and quality of... amenities and thus enhancing the economic benefit and quality of life in Finney County. Um, for those in the public who don't know, the Finney County CVB, uh, is funded a hundred percent through the transient tax, which is a six percent tax on all rooms for lodging in Finney County. Out of town, out of town, visitors pay this tax. So, um, as a large investor, the Finney County CVB is funded solely outside of Finney County taxpayers. So what we bring into this community costs the Finney County taxpayer absolutely nothing and is a hundred percent investment in the county. And you'll look at, we did, uh, a little bit of an economic impact here. When you look at the events granted, uh, monies from the CVB, that fund, um, four hundred, four million, six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, um, in return on those are events that we recruited and, um, events like Beef Empire Days, uh, the Fiesta, uh, Finney County Fair that we invest in, that is the, um, impact that those people bring into the community. Now, for events that we went out and recruited this year, um, the impact of those that we worked with was 1.7 million dollars. And I think that is a phenomenal amount when you look at the amount of dollars that are invested. That calculation, I know that you guys have heard over and over again, um, our formula. We figure that at a hundred and sixty, uh, a hundred and sixty dollars for an overnight visitor, we know that a room is roughly around a hundred dollars and that's a tank of gas. So we feel like that's a very conservative estimate. That day tripper is a person who comes in, say from Liberal, Dodge City, the surrounding areas, may come in and spend money in Finney County, but doesn't spend the night. We assign that person a sixty-dollar value, knowing that that is potentially a tank of gas, a ticket, a meal, that kind of stuff. We feel like, again, that's a very conservative dollar. And then if you're a local resident, we assign you a fifty-dollar, uh, fifteen-dollar, excuse me, um, value, not because we don't value you, but because you're not having to travel, you're not having to, you're going to enjoy the quality of life. And so it's a ticket, it may be a meal, it may be, um, just, uh, have a take a guess. I don't know. Anyways, but so that's how we figure our economic impact values. That and any dollars that an event that comes into Finney County spends in signage locally, in our local stores, any retailers, any printing that they're doing locally, those kind of costs that are, um, is, those monies that are spent in Finney County are included in that economic impact. So, you know, currently with COVID-19, we've had a, it's been a terribly rough year. We were the first ones to shut down lodging and restaurants, and then, uh, we've lost about 3.8 million dollars in revenue this year as far as economic impact to the county. So we're really excited that we're a comeback company moving forward. And if you look at some of our marketing strategies, there is a multitude of things there. What I'd really like to point out is we have started a hospitality program, um, in, uh, 2020 and 2019, which has been really, really positive. Um, we've had a little over two hundred people go through that. And with fourteen to fifteen hundred people in the lodging and hospitality industry, we have a little ways to go. Once we, uh, ended up shutting down March thirtieth, that we kind of got behind on that. So we're getting that back on track and you'll see online, we try to reward those people and give them a reason and incentivize those things. We're telling them to offer to the public by having the monthly hospitality hero. Every month, we do a Facebook post about a person who is an outstanding representative, who's gone through our class and, and shows very good customer service. We know if we can do that right in the county, then we pretty much have it hands down. Once we get them here, they always love us. So if we can do that great all the time, we're excited. When you look under tourism sales, I wanted to point out some of the things. This is from a third party, and I apologize, these are 2018 numbers. I was hoping to have 2019, but they haven't finished up that economic impact study yet. These are from Tourism Economics. This is a third-party, um, group that comes in, um, checks our tax receipts, that kind of stuff, and tells us what kind of impact we're making in our communities. And so when you look at this, and it says visitor spending in Finney County rose a hundred to a hundred and fourteen million in 2018, twenty-six million higher than 2014. Visitor spend on average, and this is what always impresses me when they come to me with these numbers, thirteen thousand dollars every hour of 2018 in Finney County. And that is amazing to me when you think about. And then also visitors spent 22 million in lodging establishments in 2018. That is an increase of 6.5 million dollars. Also, there was the, um, visitor spending, our recreational endeavors grew 4.1 percent, um, the fastest among all of the spending categories. So we were pretty excited about that in my office, and that's what we do. Also, the tourism impact on the next page, it talks about some of the jobs that are incurred in Finney County because of local tourism or leisure and hospitality spending is what I'd like to call it. Um, that supports eleven hundred or fourteen hundred jobs. Right now, I know that that's closer to that fifteen, sixty mark, just because there's a couple of businesses who have opened up in the meantime, since this report was done. Um, that's 7.3 percent of all the jobs in Finney County. So had all of the jobs on leisure and hospitality disappeared, your unemployment rate would jump to 9.5 percent. That is a huge, huge number. So we're very, we're very proud to be a part of that. Local job holders directly supported by tourism earn 24 million and with the total impact of visitors supporting 37 million in wages and benefits in Finney County. And there are some studies there, and you can see the, the graphs if you have any questions. Moving into the tax receipts, you'll see that 5.5 percent of all employment in the county is directly dependent on visitor activity compared to 4.8 for the state. So we are, um, pacing not well ahead of the state, but doing well. I, I feel like for Finney County, we are the eleventh largest tourism industry in the state. So that bodes very well when you look that we have Dodge is ten, we're eleven, and Liberal is fifteen. And so three of the largest in the top twenty is right here in Western Kansas, and we're really proud. We've worked really hard as a group to get there. Of the 90.7 million in the state and local tax revenues, 3.1 million was from sales tax collection with another 2 million in property taxes. On that, 2 million in property taxes is our lodging facilities. Again, that has rose, we know in 2019 because those facilities have, have grown as well. So, um, this year, I wanted to let you know, we did implement, um, last year with our budget post, we kind of looked at what we had to do differently to, um, basically be more cost-effective in operating. What we did is we, uh, looked into where were our big cost centers. Our big cost centers are our marketing, and we're in marketing, we're a big cost centers, and that's printing. Printing is always very, very expensive. So we moved our printing in-house, and I wanted to pass these around. Um, these are some of the pieces that we're currently putting out. We had the printer installed not too long ago, um, in February, and obviously, um, Brittany, um, Brittany Swan works in our office, and she does all of our printing for us. She has done an amazing job, and we're very excited about the pieces that we're putting out. In fact, the piece that you have now was printed on our machine, and then the pieces that are coming around, um, we've worked with a graphic artist, and Brittany is printing those pieces for us. That saves us about 10 to 15,000 dollars a year. What I really liked about it, after we started talking about it, thinking about and implementing it, we have increased our services because now we're doing in-house mailers. We got a bulk mailing permit, and so now we're sending out in-house mailers. This particular printer has a wonderful capacity to do a thing called clickable papers. Um, and as a marketer, that really is hot in me because now I have a piece, um, we haven't implemented it yet. I wanted to get Brittany very familiar with the printer before we did. But going into 2021, you'll see there's going to be a little code on, uh, most of our printed pieces that you'll be able to run a QR code reader over, and it will take you to our website. Gives trackability to our paper pieces, which really has been a real struggle in the past. How do you know you're reaching people with the right information? If they're looking at your digital product, then you have a little more trackability. And so we're really excited about implementing that in 2021. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, mine, Roxanne, and I was gonna, I was gonna ask the question about the printing because I'm aware that you have it in-house, so I'm glad you explained that. My other two questions, though, in, in your booklet, you mentioned the six percent transit guest tax that we have in Finney County. Can you explain, because I see this when I come to your meetings, but can you explain to the others what the transit guest tax rate is in some of the comparable counties? Uh, you know, we, we talk about Ford and Ellis and, and Seward and some of the others. Where do we stand with that six percent?
We stand right in the middle. Um, Dodge is at eight percent, we are at six percent, uh, Liberal is at six percent, Hays is at five percent, in which they have the availability of state five percent with a four-year university and a highway running through the middle of their town. Then also, I'm trying to think, Great Bend, I believe, is at two per, two or three percent. So they're a little lower than us, uh, but we're right in the middle. We're holding strong, and we continue to, every year, our transient tax continues to grow. Obviously, this year is not, um, going to be a year that you're going to see our end-of-year report grow. Like I said, uh, the leisure and hospitality business was the first thing to shut down. Hotel, travel, and restaurant visits were the very first thing that went, and they will be the last thing that opens up and starts receiving business. Um, especially with some of the other counties and the, the other states, and if you're going to Finney County, you have to self-fortune when you get back. So we'll, we'll get there and we'll be back on track. In the beginning, the first quarter, we were pacing to have the best year we've ever had. So we'll get back, we'll come back very quickly, I feel like. And, and Fourth of July, I want to invite everybody out to the racetrack for our first really large event. We have some, um, fall tournaments going on before that, but to come out and join us at the dirt track out by the airport, we are having a micro midget race. It is a national event, and we will have multi-states there, so we're pretty excited.
Mr. Chairman, uh, follow-up question and then one other question. The follow-up is, are the hoteliers okay with the six percent? Or is there any conversation among the hoteliers about less or more or, uh, or what, or has there been any conversation with the hoteliers about our six percent rate?
Um, so we did speak, um, and it's always an ongoing conversation. They are okay with the six percent. Now, I understand that any time, as with anything, retailers are the same way, anytime the tax rate goes up, um, there is a competitiveness that they have to maintain an amount of service per the dollar. So they're very okay with the six percent currently. They would struggle with the eight percent, especially with some of the independents, just because they're having to really fight for those rooms. They really can't charge anymore for that room. So if they do, that tax rate going up just basically cuts into their bottom line.
And then my other question is related to the 3.8 million, uh, that you referenced a minute ago due to lost events. What events have we lost totally? What events, uh, are we able to revamp and come back with something a little differently? Or, I, I know that the, uh, you know, there's been talk about the Symmetra Tour in the, in the fall and, and so forth and so on, and there's been some NCA, whatever that is.
NJCAA.
Yeah, 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 some of those. But can you help us understand where that 3.8 million dollar loss, uh, other than directly from the hoteliers, uh, what events has, have?
So that 3.8 million dollar I quoted you doesn't include lodging. It does not include any of the lost revenue from, um, restaurants or, um, family reunions or venues that are outside of, that 3.8 million dollars that I'm, um, telling you about comes directly from the economic impact of events that we are, uh, funding or in, um, fund at some, some level.
Thanks for that.
They have, it, it is not the business, there's, the, the dollar would be much greater if it was the lodging facilities. I would venture to say it would be at least triple that.
So what, give me just an example of some of the events we've lost.
So some of the events that we lost, obviously Beef Empire Days is not going to happen, the Beef Empire Days Rodeo, um, American Junior Golf Association, um, those will all return next year. Same thing with Symmetra Tour, the Garden City Charity Classic, that will happen. In fact, that will happen earlier next year, that'll be in April of 2021. Uh, we did lose a huge event, NJCAA Women's Division One Golf. Now, that will come back. We will not, uh, retain those dollars until 2023. We did, and so this is the official announcement now that law's asked. We're kind of excited because we didn't know if we were going to get that event. Once it canceled, we didn't know if it was coming back because that is a one-and-done situation. We've held multiple NJCAA championships, but never Division One Women's Golf. And so we were really excited about that because that is an entirely new event coming to our community and, um, in conversations with NJCAA. We did secure that for 2023. So we're very excited about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Roxanne, your, uh, your comment about the six percent transient guest tax, that does not apply to, to a room that is rented for 28 days or more, does it?
Correct.
Still have that?
Right. The first 28 days, we get taxes on, the last, after 28 days, we do not.
And, and that's probably not a big deal, except some companies will lease a room in a hotel for?
So it is? Yes, sir, it is a big deal. Anytime we're losing tax dollars to be able to generate, um, monies coming into Finney County, um, it's always a bonus to us. But there are multiple companies, uh, that do rent rooms for 30-plus days and then just basically have employees.
And then the budget request you're presenting to us today is you're asking the county commission to, to bless, if you will, the, the transient guest tax monies to your use as a convention visitors bureau. Not any, not, not sales tax, not property tax, this is transient guest tax only.
Right.
And that's paid at the hotel. You mentioned the, the restaurants, but they don't actually pay into the transient guest tax fund, do they?
No, they do not. The only, um, revenue that we generate, that we receive is a transient guest tax. That is the six percent get tax that is on every lodging room under 28 days.
That's the point I wanted to make clear.
I always reference the, the restaurants because you can't have one without the other when you're traveling. When have you ever gone to a hotel that you haven't visited a restaurant as well? So they're a big part of what we try to promote as well. Finney County as a whole is important to us, but those two industries specifically and the shopping are attractions, those are the four key points we always try and make when we're presenting something publicly to get an event here or?
Okay, thank you. My point of clarification, is that a state, uh, consideration over the 28 days or is that, that granted no transient guest tax over 28 days? Is that something that came down from state or is that something we did to you?
Both. That's, the, the, I'm sorry.
It's in the state law.
It is on the state statute, however, um, some of the things that are in the state statute, we opted out of when we raised our transient tax. So, um, yeah, we like to, we follow very closely to what the state statute is.
All right. Roxanne, what's your, um, collections going to be? Have you seen your first quarter yet?
I saw my first quarter. My fourth quarter is hard to judge it by. Like I said, um, we were two weeks into March when we shut down, and so my first quarter is still shows us at an increase. Uh, I haven't got my numbers in yet, which I expect to drop drastically. Um, April was good, but I know, also know there was a late payment made. So we were still, um, our revenues in May were supposed to be 89,000 dollars. We came in at 51. That still, I think, is really high. Like I said, I know there was a late payment made. So I think it was probably closer to that 30 in real life, but then I haven't got April's numbers to, to know how significantly we got hit.
So you get a monthly?
Um, I get a report monthly. I do not get the transient tax monthly. I get paid quarterly on, on the transient tax. But I watch them very closely, yes, Larry.
So you say you're down?
We're significantly down. Down to, well, we were down to 50, but like I said, I know there's a late payment there, and I feel like that that number roughly would have been in that 30 mark. Yes, it was, it was a significant, it's going to be an unusual year for us, which, um, thank goodness that we have the reserves that we did in the back so that we are still able to operate. I can still retain my staff. We're still able to meet the commitments that we had. And so we're, we're very blessed in that, that we have a very aggressive board in making sure that we're able to always meet our responsibilities.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to take the, take the Finney County Convention and Visitors Bureau budget request under advisement.
This one, I'm second.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
I'm the next one, too.
You are?
Wow. Good, good thing we, uh, we asked one of the questions.
Well, since you know that the next one is, and Mr. Chairman may not. No, I.
I bet he does.
I did.
All right, we, we do have a board appointment, uh, for Convention and Visitors Bureau. I believe that was in our packet.
Yes. Yes. Lori Jacobs from Town Place Inn and Suites by Marriott. We have a vacancy from Craig Packer, who was with the Comfort Inn. He moved to Solana, and so there's a vacancy on our board in lodging seats. So we try and replace it with an equal-sized facility, and so Lori is very, very active. We do... Every other month, we have lodging facility meetings. Lori is very active, and she's a really great leader in that group, and so I'd really like to see her be appointed to our board.
Point of clarification is just to fill the unexpired portion of his term?
It will be to fill that unexpired portion of the term.
And Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Lori Jacobs to that CDB Board position.
One second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion clear. And while Roxanne is here, Fair Board is... She's been very active on the Fair Board, and we visited about that last week, month, I believe. I would like to move that we appoint Roxanne to fill a position on the Fair Board, and if there's conflict of interest...
I will abstain.
Okay.
This is your time to pull out... No, I'm here.
I think the Fair Board may want that.
That is a motion.
That is a motion for me.
And Mr. Chairman, I would second this.
Further discussion on appointing Roxanne to Fair Board?
I just appreciate you being there, providing your expertise and professional opinion really helps.
Yes, we're excited. We're excited. It's going to move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, as she was walking away, I was remiss in saying... She mentioned all about the in-house printing and stuff, and I've seen the machine and have no desire to even get close to it because it's so...
I've seen it, too.
Yeah.
Impressive, isn't it?
It's very impressive, but they did the right thing. I was there at the board meeting when they heard the bids and so forth, and they did the right thing doing that in-house, in my opinion.
All right. Moving on, then, our agenda. We have some zoning issues. Alicia, I see you in the crowd. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
It is a little warm in here.
The first case I have for you is a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone to FC 2020 CP ARZ-16 and 17. They're wanting to rezone from manufactured home park to rural industrial in order to build a storage building for them for personal storage. Now, personal storage isn't allowed in manufactured home park, which is why they want to rezone it. And there were quite a bit of conversations on this rezone. It was tabled at the first planning commission meeting, and then it was passed as a five-to-three vote to rezone it, mainly because the surrounding is residential, and to have one lot be rural industrial, there were concerns about future development. What could be allowed there if the person were to leave? Since right now, he only wants to do personal storage, staff still kind of had an issue just because there is a large amount of manufactured homes in that area, and it could be developed as a single lot for a manufactured home. The problem is that it is in a floodplain, and it can be quite expensive to build a home or place a manufactured home in the floodplain, whereas in industrial, it's a little bit easier to build a storage building and less expensive in the floodplain.
There was a lot of discussion on that.
Yeah. There was quite a bit of discussion, yes.
All right.
I'm looking at aerial photographs. There's no homes there now, apparently.
On that lot, no, but around there, there is.
Yeah, I see around there, but it looks to me like there's mobile homes to the right of that photograph. Is that...
Yes, there is manufactured homes to the right, and to the left, there are single-family homes.
So they want to remove all those?
They... On just this one lot, there is one building on there right now that he wants to remove. There's nothing else. This is a very old aerial, so nothing else exists on there besides one building that he plans to remove.
Oh, so these are all gone anyway?
Right.
And the rezone is strictly for that highlighted area?
Correct.
Chairman? Dave, you couldn't probably know a person would be with it. Yes, I was not at this meeting. Did you have any of the neighbors protest?
No, we had no neighbors call or anything.
Really?
Yeah.
They, to me, are more important than the planning commissioners in terms of concerns. If the neighbors didn't have concern, I guess we shouldn't maybe either, so. Lauren?
Well, Alicia, remind me again. I'm scrolling through, but I am not finding it quickly. How much acreage is that?
It's a little less than an acre, it's with .912 acres.
Okay. I thought it was about an acre. I couldn't find it quickly. Okay. And so the reason that staff is not making a recommendation is because of what you just said a minute ago?
Yes, and because it's... Because the comprehensive plan shows it as residential now, amending it to rural industrial would allow for in the future, if somebody wanted to rezone, to change more of that area into industrial instead of...
But it is in the floodplain.
It is in the floodplain, yes.
You don't look like you're done, Dave. Well, I'm done. My high car keeps calling, yeah. I'm going to have to go out and make a phone call here in a minute, but I'll offer to approve this request for the rezone.
Okay, I need two motions. The first one would be the comprehensive plan amendment, and then the second.
That was what my motion was. Could you give that?
Resolution 11-2020 is the comprehensive plan amendment, and then Resolution 1220 will be the rezone.
All right. So I'll start off with the comprehensive plan. That was my... That's my motion.
11-2020.
There has been a motion.
Second, 11-2020.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now the rezone. I'll offer that motion for the rezone. Maybe it is resolution.
12-2020.
12-2020. Do I hear a second?
I would second that.
Thank you, Lauren. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much on that one. Dave, can you wait till 10 o'clock to make your phone call back to Dr. Packer? It's a four-time call. Maybe we can get...
They're persistent, aren't they?
I'll ship out and call in a minute. All right. Let's finish with Alicia, and then we'll take our break for Dave's bit of discussion.
Okay. The second one is a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone as well. It's FC 2020 CP ARZ-27 and 28 at South Pierceville Road and East Parallel Road. There's 60 acres that they're taking out. They'll come back and plot it, but they want to rezone it right now. They're going to divide it into three 20-acre lots and sell for development of residential. So right now, they want to rezone to rural residential. The comp plan has it as ag. There is an airport overlay district, since it's a little bit closer towards the airport, and that pass was recommended by the planning commission as an eight vote.
Now, I do have a question on that one. That seems to be quite a ways from the airport. How far... I know it's aligned with the runway. What is the distance from the runway that affects...
That...
...that affects this property?
I don't know what the distance is. Now, the airport overlay district is just for distance or for height, so there's a height requirement that they can't go past buildings, so it would be 100 feet. Nothing can be built.
It's got to be at least five miles from the end of the runway.
Well, it's the outer marker, I think, for instrument approaches, is right down there.
I'm just curious. No argument.
Yeah, I believe they put it out there because once you get further out, a lot of times, they want to put towers out in that area, so that's why there's that overlay district.
That's fair enough. Questions, gentlemen?
So, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding we have two different motions on this one as well.
Correct.
Comprehensive plan first, is that correct?
Amended comprehensive plan, which is Resolution 13-2020, and, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we do so.
Second.
All in favor of the amending the comprehensive plan? Comprehensive plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Now the rezone.
And, Mr. Chairman, the rezoning resolution is 14-2020, and I would move that we approve that rezoning request.
One second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Are you done with this motion?
I'm done with you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will break for five minutes later, so the Commissioner Jones may... Sorry about that. Check in with Commissioner Flipper. Go ahead, Commissioner Clifford. We have Lana up here with empirical foods.
Well, I am with Fannie County Economic Development.
The empirical foods, tax abatement.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just want anybody to think that I switched jobs. I'm still with economic development.
I stand corrected.
No, you're good.
As often.
You're good. Yeah, so we do have the tax abatement request in front of you. It has been a while since you've had a tax abatement request before you. So if you have questions about the policy and the process, I'm happy to answer those. But this is the first step, if you will, that you take as a commission. We have performed the cost benefit analysis and the tax abatement review committee has met. And their memorandum is attached with their recommendations. And we did look at both sixty percent and seventy percent. The policy for Fannie County tops out at sixty percent. However, does leave room for local decision making to go above that should you feel the need to secure a project. In this instance, the tax abatement committee suggested the sixty percent level of abatement and suggested that you approve that. Again, this is just the first step. So at this point, you enter into a memorandum of understanding with the client. And basically what that says is should you build the project the way you've outlined that you will build it, we will honor the tax abatement that you qualify for at sixty percent. Any questions?
And I'm sure, gentlemen, you looked at every page of those numbers.
Why is the CVA tool just out of date regarding the school funding?
Yeah. The cost benefit analysis tool is not good at all. The only positive to it is that it's the same one that gets used everywhere. It's the one allowed by the state of Kansas, so you can easily compare one to the other. But yes, the tool itself is not accurate. It doesn't properly capture school funding specifically. But it also has challenges even on the community college side as well. So we know that going into it, but it is what it is.
Dr. Carlin seems to understand that.
That he understands that very, very well. Yes, yeah, he has no problem with that.
But they have the slowest cost recovery.
Always. They always show the slow.
They really have a really positive number?
No, not usually. And last, the best thing that can happen for the school district is large capital investment with very minimal employees. Because what costs them in the analysis itself is the number of children that anticipates that they'll be educating, obviously. So when they estimate that at two and a half per job, that quickly, on large job numbers, ramps up the number of children that they would be required to educate. So, yeah, the only time they really look good is large capital, low employment.
But in the construction phase, they don't expect too many kids to come in here.
No, no.
Go for questions. Lana?
Mr. Chairman, this is Lana for those online. Lana, the payback, just help me refresh my memory, the seven year, ten year, and so forth. That's about standard, I mean, that's about normal, or is it not for the paybacks?
On the larger ones, yes. You know, most of the abatements that we do are twenty percent, sometimes thirty percent that they qualify. And those, we're usually able to keep under the seven years for everybody. But because, again, this is obviously a much larger project. Now, their estimate for the cost benefit analysis tool, they only estimated two hundred and fifty-two million total investment. We know that's probably somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty million short of what they're actually going to invest. But that was the information that was submitted when we first started on the project before they had identified their location and the scope of the project. So it should be a quicker payback, just based on the fact that they are investing more and therefore their tax liability will be higher. But, yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Lana, would you, for those of us who need a bit of clarity and to answer the concerns that might be raised at the coffee shop, tell us that you mentioned two hundred and fifty million dollars as a conservative estimate on this facility when it's completed. What's the value of the piece of property right now so that we can show the gain on the value on that piece of property and what the actual tax benefit will be?
Yeah, so the parcel that they purchased was not separated from the others. So it's a part of a larger parcel that was owned by transportation partner and partners and logistics. So it would be a challenge for me to go back and tell you exactly how much it was for that parcel that they purchased. They purchased right at fifty acres that they'll put their facility on, but that was out of two larger parcels, so. But the point being, that never goes away. So the value that we had increased it to the first time that we developed it, which was when we put TPNL in the Translit facility there, that valuation stays the same. Those, the taxes that are being collected on that parcel now will be collected forever. This abatement is just sixty percent of the increment increase that is created through the new construction that they're putting in there.
And that's what people don't understand, that tax abatement sounds like you're giving something away and actually we're gaining.
Yeah, we don't give much away, no. And with the way our tax abatement policy is set, which was drafted by my current board leadership was in place when we drafted that policy, it is a very conservative tax abatement policy. As again, we max out at sixty percent. There's a lot of communities that do eighty, ninety, and hundred percent tax abatements. We don't feel like that's appropriate. We don't think that that's the right way to do gross if you have to give it away. If, that probably says more about the rest of what you have going on than it does about that project. So we have great concerns with going higher than that on a regular basis. But we do also recognize that there are a lot of additional investments made and a lot of indirect and induced benefits, economic benefits, that come as a result of a project of this magnitude. And obviously, it's a project we wanted for our community. I will also tell you that the Department of Commerce last week sent out a, that they, a press release indicating that they had received a Silver Shovel Award from National Economic Development Offices. And they listed ten projects that they submitted for this competition. And empirical foods was the largest capital investment of the ten projects they submitted for the state of Kansas and the only project located west of Salina. So a lot to be proud of in that information, especially considering it was going to another state when we started. So, good on you.
And then my final question, one unresolved issue, that we figured out how to get a fellow from Ireland back here to the ABC.
Yeah, it won't be long until somebody from Ireland will be sending him back to us postage due, if he's not nice. But, yeah, fortunately, Alan's been able to stay a hundred percent involved in the project and we haven't missed a beat. But thank God for cell phones and computers and all that. He's been amazingly involved and he's been very nice to deal with us, considering the time change as well. There's a lot of times we're talking to him at midnight his time, but he understands that's part of the price you pay.
He will reappear.
He will reappear, yes. I feel confident that he will.
All right, thank you. Again, I'd like to thank you, Dave, for bringing up the point about the explanation of tax abatements for the project, because it is grossly misunderstood.
Yes, it is.
And again, I will repeat my comments at the tax abatement committee. This project is quite good for Fannie County and in fact, the whole southwest Kansas, so highly approve of the tax abatement as well.
Now you're playing a different tune over there, Dave.
So they say your motion or?
No, I'm waiting for a motion. I'm just calling it. I might get a call me very often. Larry?
Under construction, I don't come on page. Anyway, it says initial construction or expansion, two hundred million, and then the second expansion, a hundred million. What? Is there timelines between those two?
Those are?
That just to cover their bases?
Yeah, those were just estimates. And again, we collected this data over a year ago. We collected initially to, obviously for the cost benefit analysis, but also for the state of Kansas incentives. We have to supply them with the estimates as well. So when they made this calculation, these estimates, again, they didn't know for sure what parcel they were going to be locating the facility on. So they didn't know what other costs would be associated with it. But there is discussion about future expansion as the project takes off. So all of the utilities and infrastructure that we're quoting now and working on now allows for that expansion.
Your expansion would come under a new abatement? Would they reapply for a different?
It could, but only if it stretched out past, you know, significantly past the start of this one. This abatement won't actually go into effect until construction is completed, obviously. So there, that if that new expansion falls within that ten year period, it would depend on where it would be in there. We have had companies, as you're well aware, Wind River has come back a couple of times. Palmer Tank did a couple of abatements on different projects. They're certainly capable, you know, able to do that, so long as they hit the threshold for either job creation or for capital investment that's in the policy as it is now.
After the abatement retires, we've had problems in the past with valuation. You want to touch on that?
Yes, and so the step that we took as an organization was we put this meeting that's taking place right now, we added this. This meeting is not required by the state of Kansas, by the Board of Tax Appeals, by anybody. We added this meeting at this point because this is your opportunity to enter into the agreement with the project that they will follow the rest of the steps that are outlined in that process. So what we require now is that businesses meet at post-construction. They meet with the county appraiser's office and they agree to a certified value at that time. So it gives us the opportunity to make sure everybody's on the same page, but also keeps us from having to go back and reevaluate the abatement after the fact.
I've noticed Mary's nodding her head in approval, so.
Yeah.
Appraiser's office does agree, so. Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, one other clarification. So, and I heard what you just said, this isn't a required step. But is this the step they've been kind of waiting on in order to trigger their construction date?
No, unfortunately, they, their crews, a large number of their construction workers are from the Sioux Falls area.
Oh, I think you mentioned it.
Yeah, and they haven't, they haven't been allowed to come down yet.
Yesterday at a restaurant, I saw three people walking with empirical shirts on, and so I was wondering.
So you grabbed them and said, "Thank you"?
You popped their light.
Yeah, what did you do for them, Commissioner?
I didn't have a time. I had two guests with me and I was pressed. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we proceed with this tax abatement recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that. All right, thank you. Further discussion on the tax abatement issue?
And Dr. Clifford, just for clarification, are we enabling you to sign the MOU? Is that the action we're taking?
You signed the MOU, yes. Yes.
That's part of the motion, but don't worry about that.
Further discussion. Not all those in favor of the motion for the tax abatement for empirical foods, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Permitting is moving forward and all that good for the project?
Yes, but right now, most of the time is, we're spending is on engineering, mostly with wastewater, but certainly with the other utilities as well. Now, we've, the last week, we've been working quite a bit on easements that are in existence on Jenny Barker Road that we're needing to adjust to allow for the construction of the road. But, yep, things are moving along well. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You also.
Okay, moving along, extension lease with Mr. Poppins. Come with your presentation and we have Angie coming up for it.
I'll let Angie take the next turn.
Gentlemen?
Good morning.
Good morning. You're not very careful who you run around with.
Yeah, come on, the camera's rolling. I'm nervous. Haven't been here forever.
I would have thought it that same way.
It's been good, is what you're saying? In front of you is a lease agreement between Fannie County and the Western Plains Extension District Number Nineteen. I will note that there was a paragraph added after I submitted it, which I appreciate. Looks really good, but it's a hundred year lease. It's actually the same type of lease we hold with K-State out on Western area. That's where that format came from, I guess you could say. They will be responsible for the building, everything in and about the building and the master garden area.
I note that you protect us. If they do not keep the building up, we can...
We can, there's an out.
Yeah.
There's an out, yes.
Questions?
Lana? I see Jennifer said it in the audience, and any input or comments or anything from the Extension District's perspective?
Well, the first one he presented was to have anything in there about the maintenance of the building who was responsible for that. So I talked to Robert, we got that added, he's my current board, was worried that there wasn't anything about that in the lease. But I do need to send this lease on to Jim Lindquist or give to review and make sure if it is a little different than the standard form that they usually have for the district to commissioners to sign. So he wants to take a look at this, and I just got this Friday. And so I will get that sent to him today and have him look over it also, make sure it fits into all of their look-alikes.
I see county council in the audience. Have you any comment on the lease?
I believe I reviewed on Thursday and passed on it, so, yeah, and then it was forwarded, I think, to you after that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we forward this Extension Council lease to Kansas State.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
By forwarding, are you approving the lease? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's good.
Who has to approve it first?
Are we approving it?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know what the exact wording should be, because I guess I'm okay with the lease, but if he comes back with some amendments, then I think we're going to have to reconsider, so.
How about approving the lease as presented, subject to?
And forward it to Kansas State University. That'd be my, to word it that way. Because I'm okay with the lease, but I'm just, hopefully, there won't be any amendments, but.
Dory has it down officially?
Yep.
So whatever Dory puts down, are we agreeing with her?
Well, now, we...
Until we see the minutes.
Dory, would you repeat back as you understand the motion?
To approve the lease agreement between the Fannie County commissioners, West Plains Extension District Number Nineteen, for a building located at five oh one South Nine.
And forward.
Subject to review by K-State Extension.
That's everything I said.
That's everything, okay. Very good. Is that everything you seconded, Herb? All right. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion is carried. And Angie, you didn't even get to speak to it.
It's all good.
It's all good, okay.
All right, let's talk about something else, huh? All this business.
It's not fun?
It's not fun. Okay, Wildwood. They approved it like it was. Basically, I'd like you to approve the Wildwood Parks and Fees. That's my main objective here today. Again, the council has reviewed the parks and the rules, regulations, and fees. And they've been presenting it to you as the same sheet reviewed. If you have any questions, I'd try to answer questions.
It looked like it was a very inclusive list of agreements, I guess I should say.
Yeah, we hope so.
I don't think you left anything off.
Somebody will come up with something.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, somebody will come up with something. Again, the, did you ever call again about the insurance?
I'm sorry?
Did you call about the insurance again?
Yeah, I reported back to Robert and the fiscal committee, so they just asked that signage be posted and to have any events that take place there would need the, to listen to Fannie County as an additional reinsurer, that general liability, similar to events that take place.
Fair enough, yeah. I checked with them again also and they, yeah, general liability covers. We won't, they said if I keep calling them, they're going to write me a policy and charge me, but.
And I would assume under the county website page under Wildwood Park, this will be posted so that the public can see.
This will be posted. We don't officially have an opening date. We're kind of waiting on you guys and the COVID thing, and we're kind of waiting on that, but all the electrical's ready to go. We're basically ready to go, the fisher in the pond. We just got a few more little minor things to take care of.
We hadn't posted, we wanted to make sure that the policy, the rules and everything were approved by, approved here before we put them on the website. Sarah's worked with us. The website page is out there and it just, to start, it's waiting, yes. And the same with Sarah's helped us and we've got the Facebook page started, so.
You don't get off real easy, because Dave knows questions, I can see.
Not a real technical question, but the open
Not a real technical question, but the, the opening is to be decided, is that the open date?
Yes, by this board.
But how about come wintertime, do you intend, is it your thought to keep it open all winter, let folks go ice skating down there or whatever they want?
I don't know about ice skating, I don't know if I do that, but it'll be open just like a state park. We've, we've used the guidelines from KDWP for a lot of what we did down there. So it will be open 24/7. There'll be a South Pay Station to take care of that.
And then my final question, Roger, is gonna allow a camper to go in and set up?
Yes, we have ten, ten camper sites.
And so they moved in there early in the spring and come fall, they're still there?
You didn't read that, did you?
Well, I know I read it, but it's gonna say to me, who's gonna enforce that? Are you gonna put a badge on or are you gonna send a sheriff in?
We, the sheriff, I've already talked to sheriff about this, and I've talked to council about this, and the sheriff can enforce that, and also KDWP can enforce that.
Okay.
Either one can enforce that.
Thank you.
Type of situation, I guess you'd say. We, yeah, we, I guess, if there's any more questions about the rules and regulations...
Hearing none, let's go ahead and take care of that motion, please.
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the rules and regs as they are presented.
Clifford, second.
Further discussion? No further discussion heard, all those in favor of the motion, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Opening date?
I don't know.
I'm gonna glance over to our administrator, how do you feel about things proceeding so far?
What improvements are yet to be done?
We have to put up a box to, that they can collect their day passes, and other than that, we're basically open. There's more we want to do still, I understand, but, but that is the only thing that has to be done before you open. And that, that's a 30-minute project.
From a personal perspective, I would like to see it open up before the Fourth of July weekend to give some options to the community for that holiday.
That was my thought as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Any objections to that?
We'll get signage, you have no problem, that won't be an issue before then.
Angie, you look like you had something to say?
No, it's okay, it was approved earlier in the consent agenda, so.
So like a week from today or something?
Week from today?
It's good. Okay, we'll do it.
Consensus?
Yeah, my question, didn't have any, the motion, the consensus, but how often will the fish be restocked?
They are, we've actually had three different loads show up, they've been coming every couple, three months, there's, they actually sent out a schedule, I should be getting another schedule for this coming fall for the fish, there's actually a lot of fish in there right now.
But that'll be decided by the parks?
Yeah, we, we signed a memorandum of understanding with Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks that if we supply the water, they supply the fish, and that, but they are in charge of monitoring and take care of the biological effect of everything, how everything works together, ecological effect.
Except to them needs to restock.
It's up to them when they decide it needs.
And they will enforce fishing game regulations?
Yes, sir.
They're nice-sized fish, we have some really good pictures of them going in, so they're...
I did do a look back to try to figure out how much the county spent on this project from the beginning, and I've got about $15,700 tied up in it from the past couple of years that we've been...
It's not bad at all.
It's not bad for a park, I've, I've turned to Davis Electric, Tetro, Wheatland Electric, have all been more than helpful, they've been very helpful. If they can't, if they didn't, couldn't do it themselves, they steer me in the right direction, or they would give my men, who are actually doing the work, they'd come out and show up and tell us how to do it, to, you know, to their specifications, they've been a great help.
Good publicity for them as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Last option is signage?
Uh, that sign, you guys, I said, it doesn't make it around to you?
Maybe not, maybe they stopped it.
I just wanna get your, and those are just ideas, and this is kind of the prices we're looking at for those.
Sorry, I wanted to go.
The, of course, the picture of the house is what the park is named after, Wildwood, that's the picture in the hallway out here, I don't know if y'all remember that? It was a party house for the Garden City Company back in the Sugar Pete days. That's where everybody...
Lot of use to the coast office?
Yeah, I believe so. And it was called Wildwood, and that's where they all went, came together and had their celebrations and everything like that.
That house is on the National Historic Registry, I believe, but at least it's on the Kansas Historic Registry.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, you know, I think we need to put up some kind of sign that says who we are and what we are, and show it's a Fannie County Park for sure when they pull in.
Is there one entrance gate, is that correct?
Yes, there'll be one in and out. Yep, one in and out. You'll drive right by the feed, South Pay Station when you go in.
So every vehicle in will pay a $5 daily pass to enjoy the park, and then it's $15 in addition to your daily park pass, 20 for daily in to RV overnight.
If you, for the electrical outlet.
You set up like the state, you buy yearly if you want?
Yeah, you can buy yearly if you want, and the interesting thing about this park is that we had a meeting with Roxanne and Mayor Emery last week about bringing in, I'll talk fast, sorry. Oh, it's just John, is that me? Yeah. We had a meeting last week about bringing in Disc Golf, putting in Disc Golf, a course, yeah, it's a course, it's a sanctioned course, it's a sanctioned course.
Oh, I see.
And according to the representative for the Disc Golf Company, that takes, every time you have a tournament, it's about 90 people will show up, so.
To participate in the tournament, and then they'll also bring family members, so that has a definite impact on putting heads in our beds, putting people in our restaurants, supporting our commerce.
Five bucks a car, too.
It's a good thing, yeah.
And, you know, we, Disc Golf, horseshoes, sanctioned horseshoe tournaments, getting the cross-country track out there, we have a meeting Wednesday with the Renaissance Festival, that's looking at our site for Renaissance Festival.
For next year.
For next year. Keeping the, it's keeping the guys hopping.
Cross-country up and down those sand dunes, that'd be a challenge.
You're gonna sign up?
Yeah.
Anyway, do you have any questions about Wildwood, or the direction it's going, or?
Commission one input on picking the signage, or just let staff have it?
Personally, I'm okay with staff picking something. I love to answer those.
I would agree.
Okay. You know, I'll do it.
You bet you will.
And, Mr. Chairman, if, if we're done with Wildwood, I had just a general question for Roger.
Okay.
Since he's been absent from our, absent from our presence for...
It's kind of on purpose one, so.
Well, I saw, I think it was a monthly report or something, I saw you're looking for some help in this, you know, operators in different areas and so forth, help, help me understand a little bit where you are with your workforce.
Right now...
Whether you're shorn-handed, or you're getting things accomplished, or just a little bit of a verbal on the status of your department.
Right now, under the umbrella of Public Works, which is the fairgrounds, building maintenance, road and bridge mainly, and noxious weed, we are eight short, eight staff members short. We're, we're talking this afternoon about getting a noxious weed man hired, but we're still, we still have a shortage, of course, you know we are under a hiring freeze currently, but, you know, staff is an issue, and what I worry about, I guess, is the level of service that we provide being short-staffed, keeping what I expect the men to get done, to get done, being short-staffed. Have they been doing it? Yes. Has it been a struggle? You know, we've been working Fridays to pull this stuff off, but it is, it is a struggle being that, that many short. Of course, the noxious weed man that we hire will be utilized in road and bridge when it's a slow season of noxious weed, and we're doing a lot of things like that. I'm, I'm crossing the agencies a lot, you know, I got, I got building maintenance guys out, building shelters at Wildwood, but, you know, if they got time, like, we can keep them busy. But I'm using men across lines quite a bit to try to accomplish as much as we can.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my other comment to that is, and I'm looking at it here on my desk, and it's Bill Clifford knows I keep it in front of me, each and every meeting, two of the six mandated services that we have are roads and bridges, that's one, and noxious weed, and I think those are two important services that we need to make sure that we're staffing well enough to, especially the roads and bridges, but even noxious weed is important. And so that was the reason for my question.
My follow-up with an attaboy, in my particular district, just in front of harvest, you guys have had the roads out there just about as good a shape as you're gonna get, I appreciate that, I know, haven't been exactly a worship problem to mess them up, but...
We have had issues, though, we have had issues, we have issues...
Doesn't work really well to work a dry road, either.
No, it doesn't. We had issues out on any, any shear, and the, the issue with any shear is when you, when you harvest, you, and the bottom falls out of the sandhill roads, it's, it gets tough.
Different district, I'm sorry, guys. Mine is very shit. Well done.
And I'll pass that on, so.
Further questions, observations, comments for Roger and Angie? Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
And John, project updates?
We're waiting to take a break, John, can you? I was, I took one too early. It's usually break time when I get ready to come in.
Yeah, it is.
I got all day, so if you need another one. Was asked to do a project update, I didn't bring any picture, I brought a picture, I didn't share any in the memo, so if you want to look, this is Jenny Barker Road project, kind of an outline of projects' location and where things are. Contractor will be Spore Land Development, out of Colby, is the main contractor, and he's got a list of a few others doing the roadwork, placing the bridge, our little culvert from the Walmart ditch, they're gonna relocate it to the north a little bit where it lines straight up, and then, just traffic control and some other, other things, other guys out there. They had it in mind to maybe start this week, I think you'll start seeing utility locates being done so they can start placing and locating sign locations come Monday, the 22nd, for sure. Jenny Barker from Mary Street South to about that first home will be closed to traffic, so they can start removing the box, pavement, removing that box, redoing that ditch location. As they do that and get into that, some, they'll be starting on the drainage ditch, or the drainage pond, whatever, for city's pond, east side drainage. And I guess the sequence from there would maybe, maybe start widening the west side of Jenny Barker so they could, for temporary traffic, so they can maybe start later on the pavement on the east side. And storms were being put in.
So they do project to have traffic available after the...
Traffic to T-Bone Stakes will, they'll have access all throughout the project, just not through from Showman to the highway.
Okay.
Once they close it, then they're not gonna open that back up until the project's finished. There'll be maybe some short day or so closures, or temporary places where people can't get in their driveway for not very long, everybody has access throughout the project.
But the public will not be using Jenny Barker?
Public should not be using, not to go through.
Your bypass to the bypass is closed, sir.
If one of the high schools starts back up, that'll have an impact. It should have some, I, I don't let my kids go that way, I mean, I just don't like the 156 Jenny Barker intersection, and she found out she didn't like it much either, so she'll take the bypass up and maybe over to Mary Street and over, but, yeah, that's gonna be out of, out of commission for about 10 months is the project decimate length, maybe a little longer to spend on holidays and winter, but that's the, that's the plan for that. Farmland Road, we have made some progress as far as right-of-way, we met with a couple landowners last week. One of the apartment, the apartment complex owners and Darwin about just where right-of-way is gonna be in their easements are gonna be, and how they're gonna be affected when that stuff goes to work. I think we have one or two maybe gonna be set up meetings this week. People want to see physically where that stuff, so pictures don't quite do a very good So hopefully that starts progressing more where we start getting agreements made and the easement signed. KDOT pushed the project to fiscal year 2021, which really probably doesn't affect any letting date. That doesn't affect the letting date as much as right-of-way and utility relocates will, but it's still on their books, they're still looking at it, it didn't go away. We're looking at maybe a spring project, hopefully still letting at the, towards the end of this year. Yeah, still letting this year, but not probably starting the project till spring. Our ceiling, chip ceiling projects are complete. The overlay project, the mill and overlay on Fannie Scott Line, start around August. Venture Corporation is gonna do that, and they're doing the South 83 project, and I think a handful of other smaller overlays from that plant, so that's their schedule so far on that. If you haven't been out there, K-156 from Highway 23 to Jetmore has been milling overlaid, it's pretty nice so far. The 23 West in the Garden City will be rebid this fall, so they had to do some trade-offs to get, problem with the aggregate with, the asphalt company wasn't able to get all the aggregate, so they took 23 West aggregate, put it on what they could, and ended that east project. Talked about US 83 South, I, I haven't heard a whole lot more on the progress where they're at, but they're still building boxes and, and working on the, probably some of them lanes on the east, to the west.
They get custom firework lying down there.
Do they?
What was that, right? When they do that, all, all the internet access, Pocum and everything, it's happening through free time line now.
And you don't know whether to blame the contractor or your locators.
Somebody forgot where it was.
I have my thoughts on maybe where that comes from, but, you know. So unless you have any questions, that's my updates.
Questions on those projects?
The chip ceiling, I thought they did an excellent job, they did a great job out there.
River Road?
And, and...
Pocum Lane in parallel, got down to Flying Mill and Beefland.
Good guys to work with, you know.
They do a really good job.
It seemed like that every day we were getting ready, we were hauling cattle, they were hauling gravel, but they worked around us and we worked around them.
Good.
I've been meaning to ask you this for months, seems like when Humphrey Road, just west of the road, the tracks was finished to Mary Street, in the past, the businesses paid for that with the agreement that we maintained it after that point, is that, did that stay with the north part of that Humphrey Road?
No, we paid for that.
You paid for that?
Mm-hmm. Has there been thought of doing the front East Road from Humphrey to, what is that, to the west one?
Not unless you put that in my mind. I mean, I guess there's... I mean, I guess there's always been some kind of thought, but it's always, those have been company, district pushed as far as if you want it, then we.
What is that? Quarter mile?
The most?
Maybe, maybe a third of a mile.
I know there are lots of business on there, sure.
I'm sure they would love to have all of them paid to there, but.
Well, there, I don't know how many dealers' businesses on that front east road, quite a few. That would stretch.
I have a question for John. Friday, John, I went to Ulysses and I came home by 160 and then come into garden from the south through the new construction on the highway down there. And they have all kinds of dirt moving equipment. It was all setting idle Friday, but looks like they're getting serious about what they're doing. My, my question is, that comes up and stops about a mile to the south of Fly Mill. What, what was their final determination? How will that highway be routed through the, by the school at Fly Mill and the church? Does it, does it get?
It doesn't, that project won't go that far. It just.
I, I realize now it won't go that, but when, when it does go that.
I haven't seen what that looks like.
Okay, I didn't know if you'd seen that or not because they got a, a school and a church in their way or a big, big, nice farmstead.
Yeah, that's going to be a tight.
Caution Coffee Shop Wisdom says southbound runs between Bricky and the school and the northbound is on the east side of Bricky's complex, so it'll be divided. It'll be in an island in the middle of the median.
Well.
That's coffee shop talk.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty accurate, I expect, at the coffee shop.
That's assuming.
It was just interesting looking at that coming in from the south. All of a sudden they, they've got some kind of a, of an obstacle to get around down the road.
Yeah, if, I haven't seen anything on that, what it looks like. And I can't even say where I've seen that they bought, where they bought the right of way.
I remember we, we looked at plans several years ago when they first started talking about that and that whole thing shifts to the east.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think they would put it breaking in an island in the middle of the highway.
Well, they didn't want to buy him out either.
At one time they were moving a lot of stuff to one side or the other of all of that, which was.
This came from a landowner on the east side of Bricky. That's the landlord, what he told me.
The way they're developing that were the new, the new additional lanes, part of the time on the west side or the old part of the time on the east. That's going to be a zigzag course. What's it?
Well, it's, that's exactly how they did the south portion of that already, is they kind of jogged back and forth until they.
Yeah, you have to stay awake when you're driving on that.
That's probably a good thing.
Didn't move the radar level.
No, they're not going to move that.
All right, further questions for John? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, John. Thanks, John.
Board of Governance, any, do you have anything on the Board of Governance you have to cover?
Well, I'll just throw it in there rather than in my report because part of our governance is legislative advocacy and, and we wrapped up the legislative session and sent several bills to the governor. She's vetoed some and, and signing some. But the one that is most notable from a KAC and county commission standpoint is the bill that was, that was to include Senate Bill 294, which was the one to do away with the tax lid and, and replace it with a reporting thing and so forth and so on. That did not make it through the session, so that'll be up for discussion next year, I'm sure. But at, at least at this point, we're still under the tax lid and as, as we have been, nothing has changed from that regard. So I thought that was most notable from, from the county perspective.
Okay. Anything further? Let's move on to administrative report, if you will.
Okay. Last week I made a really difficult decision for me and my family. And this decision's been coming on for about a year now, but last week I tendered my resignation with the intent to retire on September 20th. September 30th will be my last day in Vinnie County. I have loved every minute of being here. It was a very difficult decision. We originally were going to retire, both my husband and I, next year in August. However, because of COVID and not being with my family and because of some other family things, I'm going to cry. Some of the family things that happened last week, it just made it toward my husband and I decided I really need to go home. I've taken care of everybody else's families, but I haven't taken care of mine. And so it's time for me to get to go home and take care of my own family. But you, this is such a progressive county. And I think that's why I've loved being here so much, is you care about the people. I've never lived and worked anywhere where the county as a whole cares so much about the kids. And you do. And it shows in what you have done here in Vinnie County. And I appreciate all that I've gotten to do here. And I am really working hard with some people who I think were great successors for me and doing a lot of training with my staff. They're watching, all my supervisors watch you guys now on Mondays and we talked about it afterwards. And, and because I really want them to understand the workings of the county. And I just really appreciate all that you have done for me, my family, and for the families that we serve. Thank you.
Wow. You will be missed. September?
September.
Good, not a few months yet.
Yes.
Thank you for your time, Bureau. We appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. You've been fantastic for Vinnie County. Your passion for the kids has always been very obvious and I've always just enjoyed watching you speak about that because, because of your passion and so. Thank you very much for what you have done.
That's about enough out of you for your announcements, or.
All right. Robert, continue.
Quick COVID update. I know that the testing site down at Fairgrounds, it is open in the mornings only. Still pretty limited. Anywhere from the upper teens to the upper thirties in terms of the amount that they're testing on a daily basis. We'll be monitoring it this week. There may be a possibility before the end of this week that they move out of the Fairgrounds and go back to the health department. Last, towards the end of last week, numbers got, got down a little bit. And so, so they're going to run a couple of days, Monday and Tuesday and perhaps Wednesday and then make that determination here this week on whether or not they'll move down to the health department, but don't be surprised if they do. We have lost a number of the volunteers. And rightfully so because of our, our numbers being down. We have lost the air guards as of last Friday. And that was the first two that came in. There was about eight or 10 of those. And so, so we still have a few of the guards, our guards around. So you'll start to see those numbers continue to, to decline as, as well. As far as our total that have tested positive, I think you've probably seen relative updates on that. No new deaths last week. We're still in the, been, what, 1500s on our positives.
15, 38.
38.
So nothing extraordinary there. So anyway, I, I just wanted to bring you up quickly up to date on that and potentially for that move back to the health department.
On that point, I would highly encourage it. I've been in that building in the summertime and it is hot.
Yeah.
It has to be horribly miserable for staff out there.
Yes, they try to maintain in the morning, as, as we say, and then afternoon they're doing all their follow up calls and so on and so forth from inside, so. Budget and finance update, we're still going through the licensing process, still waiting on the finalization of the audit. Doing the revenue assessment, as Roger mentioned, is that we're still not hiring sprees and a capital purchase freeze until we do a complete assessment of, of revenues for the county. Those, you know, related, related to that and to the COVID is that we're continually gathering that information and that data on the final cost today for the county. With the understanding that there is some federal money out there. I did sit in on a call a couple of weeks ago on Chris's 50's behalf. We would anticipate, I, I anticipated another call this week. Is that cool?
I haven't seen anything, but I think so.
Just to let you know then that, that. The, the county will receive and be in charge of approximately $6 million from, from their Sparks program. I can't tell you what that acronym, it, it goes right off the bat. But anyway, it's recovery for local units of government on the cost of, on the cost of expenses related, directly related to COVID-19 and the mitigation of that. And those monies will go out not only just to the county, but cities, school districts. It's a three-phase process. It's new enough that they don't know all of the workings of this. But just be aware that quite possibly, from what I understand, based on that first call, we should see those revenues coming in before the end of the month.
Any guess on what percentage of our expenses might be recovered?
Well, the ones that are directly, directly related, so, or those that are related to the health department expenditures, those will be direct expense that would be recoverable. And that's why we're going through that process of detail of by department, what expenses. So if we pay out of pocket for the personal protective equipment, that's recoverable on behalf of the county. Same way with the cities, same way with the school districts and special districts, they would receive those, those types of reimbursements, if you will, from that grant.
What about maybe overtime for all the staff that?
If, if it is directly related to the mitigation of COVID-19, yes.
Good.
So those, and, and there is a federal reporting aspect of it. This is a, will be a federal grant. And so there's a, there's an awful lot of tracking that goes along with that. Probably even more so than what you saw if you're around here for the E91, or the 911, 911 grant that the county probably received a lot of money for, for various purchases.
Sure did, yeah. For the next several years, all that was spread out.
Yes, exactly. So we're putting things in place on that to be tracking, tracking that as well.
May I ask a quick question? Is, is Steve, the, the emergency management people and with their tracking system, are they the ones kind of responsible for collecting and assimilating the, the facts and figures here of the reimbursement?
For the, for the county, we'll be running that through the accounts table, AP process and through the payable process.
Okay.
Because those are the correct sources for those expenditures. We established a long time ago, months ago, the coding process for that. So now we're, we're going through, through the process of quality controlling, making sure that all those costs are captured.
Well, excuse me, we keep receiving an email from the, from KAC, Kansas Association of Counties saying we've not heard from certain counties in terms of their costs. Vinnie County is rather frequently mentioned in that list. So who is reporting to KAC? Is that you?
Yeah, we, we did send them one report. In, in my opinion, I think there's more costs out there that we need to report to them. So it's a tentative, it's a tentative number.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see, whatever. Really, for the most part, that is, that's, that's the end of my briefing. So to cure your questions.
Okay, any, any questions? All right, I hear none. Long, we'll start with you today.
I really don't have anything special since my last comment.
Dave?
I don't have much. I had a, had a handful of phone calls, mostly dealing with when are we going to open the, the library, for example. And so I'm here today to report that, that tonight at 5 o'clock this evening is a library board meeting and it's actually an in-person meeting where the last two or three months, things either were, were Zoom meetings or were canceled. But the determination tonight will be high on the agenda, when to open the library and to what, to, to what limits. Some programs probably will be deferred for a while. Senior Center, I can report that that meeting will be Wednesday. And for those, I sent out a text message about Sherry, the director over there, having an aneurysm and surgery. I can report that she's doing pretty well. She was dismissed from, from the hospital, from St. Francis Hospital, and she's in another smaller hospital. It's kind of a, of a sling bed or rehabilitation setting. And my understanding was that, that they would, they assumed she'd be there a couple weeks, but she's not yet home. And so the, the folks over at Senior Center are missing her presence, but they're functioning pretty well. And they have their programs opening back up and the bus is running again and so on. So that's returning to near normal. The, the final thing that I might want to mention, and I appreciate Robert for getting in the, the middle, had a, had a couple phone calls, one right after the other, from people who were in line downstairs trying to renew tags. And the fact that they got on the queue, they had a number, one call was, he was number eight. And he said, people kept coming in the door and going around him and in and getting their tags. And he's standing there thinking this is moving pretty slowly. And when he finally got through, he inquired about where are those other folks coming from? Well, they had enrolled or had joined the list from online or by phone call. And he said that was not appearing on the, on the TV screen. When he left, they were at number 54. So he was there for a while and not long enough to get a little aggravated. So Robert took care of that and I understand now everything's fixed up. And so if you're standing there and you're number eight in line, but somebody had called in, their name now is displayed on the TV board so that you're not frustrated, you know that, that they made arrangements to, to be listed. So I appreciate, that's a mess down there because everybody all of a sudden is trying to get, get registration and so on. So we appreciate what you did.
Yes, the, the main thing in essence is that they can go online and, and check in. And then, then that gets posted up there on the queuing board where they're at. So those that may have been standing in line, those individuals that have come in or that are coming in, more than likely they've been, they've been brought into the process either online or if they check in early and they've got so many stacking and turn rates, well, they go back out in their, their car and wait. And then when they receive a phone text or whatever, then they can come back in and get right in.
Well, I might, I might suggest people who are irritated standing in line, there's a drop box and it works well. And, and the folks downstairs will get right on it as soon as they can. And they will either mail you your, your material or give you a call so you can come and get it. So they'll, they make it easier. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I too have had calls on that, one of them this morning. And everybody's wondered how to do it. And it's, I know Kristen's office has been overwhelmed with people waiting for this opportunity to talk to a person. waiting for this opportunity to talk to a person. Krista's gonna come up and speak to that just for a moment on the mic for the public.
I didn't realize Krista was back.
And, and again, she seems to be in the hot seat, so any communication to the public, I'm sure is appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, it's, it's really just a learning process for the public and for my staff too. You know, this is a, a new thing that we're rolling out. It's designed to help control the traffic in our office for safety for everybody involved. So to maintain the, the proper social distancing that, you know, that we've been asked to do. So as, as Commissioner Jones saw this morning, it was a little bit of a mad dash first thing in the morning, but later in the day it does even out. And so the queue does work properly. When I came up here, I think we had forty people in line in an estimated wait time of two hours for the last person. So that's not actually really bad. You know, compared to what it could be. We don't have people standing around the block, so it's really more about comfort for everybody involved. So does anybody have any questions or about how to?
I, I make observations from this morning's, you do have all, a lot of windows open. It's not one or two windows.
No, we have five windows open currently. We have eight windows, eight, the space for eight windows available in the office. We've chosen to only open five to maintain social distancing. However, as we watch what the COVID numbers are doing, you know, we're anticipating opening more of those windows, but we do have five open all the time in our office, not just one.
Excellent. Any other advice on how to, for the public on how to get on the phone call or?
I, I would recommend for sure going to vinnicounty.org/treasure and clicking on the Q list dashboard link. That will walk you through the entire process on how to get on. If you go to vinnicounty.org/treasure, there are also other options. It states you can call in, you can text and get in line that way. Or you can also come in and, and our people at the reception desk will put you in line that way. But you know, it's always better to do it from the comfort of your own home. That's how I prefer to wait.
All right. Well, I think I appreciate that. Dave?
One of the nice things that has been added with all of this, Royce, is a reception desk.
Yes.
And a very pleasant person sitting at that desk that, that makes the public feel better and so for for that effort, I, I want to tell you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. And I want to, and I want to say thank you to the clerk's office because they have also sent people over and I want to thank the sheriff's office because they have also sent deputies over to help us just to control things.
And, and don't forget the drop box.
Yes, please, please. If you can avoid coming into our office, utilize that drop box. It's very fast. They're usually processed the same day or the next day if you put them in there.
And for the public's perception, I stuffed a really big envelope in that. They fixed that problem and made it so big envelopes. So I, I did that.
We got a bigger drop box on Friday, thanks to our maintenance staff. So, you know, that, that is just better.
I did that for a favor for the public there. It's my, my bad.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Anything else?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
We appreciate the chairman helping out.
As far as my other reports, other than the call this morning on the treasurer, again, I've had a couple of churches call up and ask what the rules are for the churches. And so there is a great interest in the, in the churches of the community. They're ready to open up as well. And other than, I had no official, I missed all my meetings. I think I'm occupied at the forum, so I missed my fair board. Economic development and extension meetings like, I'm sorry, apologize. That's it.
I just, I remember the calls regarding the town's river view water situation and the commissioner Fischies explained that very well. And a lot of travel throughout the district campaign. That's all I have.
Clear.
I'll comment on the road ceiling again. You know, I drove by the Senior Center parking lot. I was reporting, doing my weekly so journey in there and the parking lot looks really good and they did a great job out on River Road. Also had a workforce one, our annual meeting, and we did it online. They decreased their budget due to less travel, their operation costs going down. But they had also a fourteen percent increase in their Blue Cross Blue Shield for their employees. They met all their twenty nineteen goals by more than a hundred and ten percent. So they're pretty proud of their, of this area one workforce. What they're doing now is virtual job fairs. And it was quite interesting, area one, they had over forty-eight employers set up a virtual job fair with over a thousand job seekers. And so the virtual job fair deal looks like it may be something they will pursue more in the future. Had a few calls on roads and sand hills and Roger, like Roger said, I talked to him about lack of moisture, just doesn't work on those sand roads. We, we don't get any moisture. We can't do much about them until it rains. Most of the people are pretty understanding issues that it's pretty frustrating when they're trying to do hardest and the bottom just completely disappeared.
Okay. Anything further to come from the commission today? Our meeting has adjourned. Thank you all.
Good job.